Oh.
It's no sniffle, but it's gone. But it was good. That's good.
Oh, yeah.
Folks, just so you know, it's hard live. I just can't get it on.
You say we're live?
Let me check. Yes, you are.
Good evening. Welcome to the work session Monday, October 27th. Ms. Whitten, would you please take role?
Supervisor Lewis.
Present.
Supervisor Day.
There.
Supervisor Lyons.
Here.
Supervisor McDaniel.
Here.
Chair Ayers.
Here.
Turn it over to you.
I believe we're going to turn this over to Mr. Dryden.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Dryden.
If you notice, the presenters, we have three of us listed on there, so it's turned over to all three of us.
Okay.
I'll kick it off. For the past year or so, we've been reviewing over our current procurement policy. Had several meetings on it. We've looked over probably, I'm sorry, we looked over maybe a dozen or so different current policies adopted by different counties and localities throughout the Commonwealth. The reason why we're looking at this is that, first of all, our procurement policy that we currently have was adopted in was effective as of January 1st, 1983. And we basically at that time adopted what was then the Virginia Procurement Act. The problems being, of course, is that the procurement act has changed quite a bit since that's time. So that means our procurement policy is technically out of date. We've had, we have made passed a few resolutions to update it, but to be frank, if the resolutions weren't done in the past decade, we don't have them in our records. So there could be some updates that we're not aware of that we do, they are in the records. We'd have to go to the courthouse and dig through the documents back there. And so we, and, and, and we do need to update it to, to meet the times and to make sure that we're in compliance and that we have a framework that works for us as a county, given the, make sure that we are following proper financial controls to the, and that we are doing as we should to offer up procurement when we offer outer government contracts. But at the same time, to make sure that we have something that the management can actually function under and in a way that enables the county to function in an appropriate manner. Through looking through all of the different options that were available out there, we did the one that I was attracted to most was the, was the, and we make reference to this here, and that was the procurement ordinance that Augusta County has. And, and, and the reason why I was attracted to it the most is because it is exceptionally short, and I think that's something we should follow. The reasons being is that we, because we are a county and because of our size, we are subject to the Virginia Procurement Act unless we adopt a policy of our own procurement policy with similar, similar financial controls. Which means that we don't have to adopt any policy. The only reason why we would be adopting a procurement, because we are subject to Virginia Procurement Act. The reason why we should adopt a policy is because we want to make some changes that affect, that fit our county better. And, and we'll get into it and we'll kind of show you what we're proposing and some of the languages there. But the reason why I am attracted to having a short policy is because the only thing that I believe legally that we need to be stating is that we're adopting the Virginia, we are following the Virginia Procurement Act and that we, and the things that we don't follow are these that we have listed in there. And also, we need to, the board supervisors needs to, the board supervisor has all authority within the county, but the type of government we have, you have all authority, the, the county government rests with you five, except for those things which you specifically delegate. You are required to appoint a procurement agent. And as the county administrator has in the past been appointed as a procurement agent, because this will supersede all of our, our previous policy, we'd need to reappoint the procurement agent, which we recommend to be the county administrator again. And then you're authorized as a procurement agent to create a procurement procedures and regulations handbook, which would enable, which would actually list the procedures that we in the county follow in pursuing our procurement activities. And this is actually timely too, because we're in the midst of the Tyler training and quite a bit of this will run through the Tyler software and a lot of the procedures we have to follow because of the Tyler system we're adopting would then be incorporated into our, our procedures handbook. And so those are the main things that we're asking, we're asking, and, and you don't have to act on it today. We're bringing it before you today. We have, do have it scheduled, the policy scheduled to be on your regular meeting this evening, but we don't, we can postpone that if, if after discussion decide that you'd rather look into this deeper. But the, the three issues that we want to talk about today would be procurement policy, which we have introduced. The fact that you're granting the authority to the procurement agent to have the county administration come up with a handbook, which would, a procedures handbook. And, and then number three, we'd like to raise the issue of contracting authority, because that ties a lot into your, so is it, would it be appropriate, as we understand, for example, the city of Lexington grants their town administrator, the city administrator, the authority within their charter that he can enter into contracts on behalf of the city. So the question comes, would it be an appropriate, we'd like to bring up the issue of contracting authority and is that would be appropriate for the board of supervisors to delegate to the county administrator a certain level of contracting authority for certain types of contracts. We're not making any recommendations at this time, but we'd like to have a bit more of a discussion about that. So, and I'll just kind of get into my, the board report we have. As I mentioned, the Virginia Procurement Act, we are subject to that unless we come up with another policy and, and I don't think it makes sense for us to adopt this, our own separate policy. We have, we have the Virginia Procurement Act is one that all contractors expect that we're going to be following, and it just makes sense instead of us going through that for creating our own. We also have the authority to, and this is the only real change, the only real, the change that we're adopting, we're adopting a small, we're recommending that we adopt a small purchasing policy. Because actually, under the Virginia Procurement Act, there is no small purchasing policy. It's anything below $200,000 or anything below, for a normal contract, anything below $300,000 for a construction contract, or anything below $80,000 are not subject to the, the bidding requirements and not subject to any particular policy. So we believe that they should be as they are in most jurisdictions and they are in our jurisdiction. We just think we should change some of the limits. And so that will be on the next page over. If you look in the board report, we actually have a table which gives a summary of the small purchasing policy that we proposed to be adopted. So that would be, do you have the board report on that? I'm just saying, make sure you have it. Okay. But I, I can, I can give you a verbal description. Yeah, yeah, it's, it would be in the. Yeah, it should, it should be in the handout.
Go ahead. I'm listening.
Under the, under the Virginia, and the Virginia BPPA, the Virginia Procurement Policy Act, goods and non-professional services have a, anything $200,000 or above is subject to the Virginia Procurement Policy Act, the BPPA, which means that it needs to go out for bidding, depending on the type of contract it is. We were, we'd like to propose a threshold of $100,000. And that's similar to what Augusta County does, and frankly, it's, it's, we're currently at, is it $50,000? Is that correct? Ashton, do you remember? Yeah, so at 50,000 above, or is it 30,000 above? I'm sorry, I should have known that rough top of my head, but we're, we're a good bit lower than that. And so anything for, so we actually are required to put out onto the street for RFPs or other types of bidding, quite low contracts, much lower than most other jurisdictions we follow, and much lower what the BPPA requires. So for management purposes, we think it just would reduce the workload. It does not, we don't believe it will increase any risk, but it will reduce the workload and be able to focus just on the larger contracts in that area. Anything between $50,000 and $100,000 would be subject to our small purchase policy, which requires the, whoever's seeking that contract to go out and get three bids and provide proof of what bids they received and provide a form that to our procurement manager, which describes, you know, the process, what they got and the reason why they chose the vendor that they chose. Now, sometimes there aren't three vendors out there, so we would sometimes only be able to put two, and we'd explain why we can only put two, and that's part of required to provide an explanation and then again, explain who you chose. So there are controls. Anything below 50,000, we would like it, this, and remember, everything here has already been appropriated and allocated by the board. We'd like to have the department heads who have their own budget to be able to make those determinations, subject to the normal controls that we have, where it has to go through the systems and they have particular sign-offs, but not require particularly having to, the, following a bidding process. Construction contracts, we will follow the same numbers, you know, 100,000, 50,000, we, we, we suggest, though, under the VPBA, you could go up to $300,000. And then, the one thing which I didn't mention here, their VPBA does, if it's a, if it has to do with roads, there's a $25,000 minimum, so anything of $25,000 above, those have to go up for public procurement, but we don't, that's usually VDOT does it. We don't really, I don't even know if we ever do that. But that is in there, just in case it would pop up. And finally, professional services, that's a special rule that they have in the BPBA for $80,000. We suggest that $80,000 be the number. So anything 80,000 above, we put out for bid. Anything below that would be, the department heads would be able to make that determination self-subject to our internal controls. And some of the reasons why, identified some of the reasons why we think we should be doing this, but one example, we, our, our current procedures manual doesn't say anything about Eva, and we are now required by law to actually list all of this, the bids on the Virginia electronic platform. If, or we could list our own electronic platform, but we're encouraged to use the states, which is the Eva per platform. That is actually required. We can't take paper bids anymore. We have to, everything's done electronically. Of course, our policy doesn't state anything about their policy. It doesn't have any of the requirement. Virginia Public Procurement Act has adopted several required contractual terms that have to be in contracts, such as if you have subcontractors, your payment schedules, et cetera, and are, those are all in, in the state code, which, but are not in our policy. In theory, that means we don't have to follow that, though I don't think that would be true, because we could say we've adopted our own policy. But in reality, of course, we follow that and we, we should follow it. And the benefits of saying, basically saying we're following the VPBA and not going in detail what it is, it means if there's any state changes on the state level, we don't have to go back and update. We should have been updating our policy whenever there was a change in VPBA, but we haven't done it because that's a lot of work. And so by just adopting the, the statute, which we have to follow anyway, we just, we, we don't have to make the changes. The legislature will take care of that for us. And, and one example that we actually are following the state law, which, but our policy actually requires that there's any substantial changes in the contract pricing for a renewable contract, if it goes above 25% of the base price or, or our $50,000 or more of the increase in price, we actually have to bring it back to get approval by the board. Actually, in our policy, it's $10,000 is the limit. And so we're not actually following our policy. We're following what the statute says, but in theory, we, our policy should say the right things. So there's several reasons why we, we should adopt it. But the, the, the main point being is that simplicity, because now we're just following the VPBA. We don't have to be worried about keeping everything up to date. And increasing the main change would be the increasing of the small purchase levels to the $100,000 and the $50,000. Compared to right now, our numbers are, are much lower than that. I believe the minimum number right now is 2,500. Is that right?
And $1.
Yeah. So, which is anything that we have to acquire above that, that price or higher, we have to go out and get the informal bidding process and not the formal bidding, but it takes a lot more time to do that. And then we have to go through the procurement manager as opposed to the department heads being able to handle themselves, which adds a tremendous amount of workload on, onto her desk. And resulting in projects not being getting out on the street as quickly as they could if we could move the workload around. So th- those are the main reasons. I don't know, Spencer, on this picker thing, or, or Ashton, do you, if you all have any other further comments?
And as we move on to the Tyler system, the Tyler system is very rule-bound. And of course, with the Tyler system, the department heads and constitutional officers will have a more active role in entering their own information, their own purchase orders, and, but it's, they're, for example, we're working on a flow chart that will, it's, it's very controlled. You know, the department head enters it here, it's over certain dollar amounts. If it's a capital assets, gets directed here, gets directed to this person. Gets signed off on, moves up to the next level. Having, looking at some other counties who, with their purchasing manuals, the ones we're recommending that the county administrator as a purchasing agent would have the authority to adopt and change. Waynesboro is a good example. They have a really good, their purchasing manual reflects Tyler, like it's specifically says, you know, outlines what you need to do in Tyler to do these next steps. And I think we know right off the bat, we're not going to get the, the flows and everything correct. It's not going to be perfect when we get it out there and having those detailed purchasing rules and guidelines. We're going to have to, as we all, us as a finance and IT, but also the department heads and constitutional officers, because we're all learning the system. There's going to be changes. Those changes could be more effectively implemented. Because we're getting into the weeds here on, on purchasing rules and permissions and stuff. That would give, we could just make those rule changes and just send out an update instead of bringing things to the board to change maybe one rule, for example. Usually that would take, things like that usually takes months. And I think it'd be a lot more streamlined if we gave it to the county administrator, that authority. So as I see it, the board would be, they, they set the guardrails with the, well, the main guardrail is the budget and appropriation. That's the, that's the biggest control on the board, but also the small purchase policy is the guardrails. But within that, we would be, at least as finance staff to the county administrator, be proposing other rules involved much more detailed than what you would, you would see as far as how to make purchases, when to amend, when to get a purchase order, who can issue purchase orders, all those type of things. Those will be spelled out in a manual. And so this has been probably the biggest, yeah, I, I will say this, the biggest headache I've, since I've been here is our purchasing policy. I've worked for bigger and, and smaller jurisdictions and haven't seen it, things this restricted. And of course, as a county government, we're, we're very decentralized. I mean, we have centralized purchasing in this, or accounting, mainly with Julie, but that's a, that's, that's not what we're talking about when we talk about centralized purchasing. Kind of like what the, kind of like what schools have, you know, they have whole staff around. Everything goes through, ultimately through these, the, the finance people. We don't do that in the county government. You know, we got constitutional officers and the department heads. They all do, and I, and I mentioned this, I mentioned it during the budgets, and I mentioned this when we have our periodically, when we talk about budgets at our monthly meetings that Spencer has with the department heads. They do a great job. We, we're lucky to have departments and constitutional officers that really watch their budget. And so that is a big help, but also putting these things in writing, keeping it, because rules have changed and, you know, we don't put things down in writing, and that frustrates some of the department heads, and rightfully so. If I was in their shoes, where they're hearing one thing and then a couple of months later, we're like, well, we'll let this one pass because we don't have things written down in, in a nice manual for people to reference. And again, there's, there are several jurisdictions we've looked at. But like when we talk about the flow charts, that flow chart would become a part of the manual. It has the the flow chart of how things are, are captured for a person.
I, I like to look at, rather than reinventing the wheel, look at what works, and we try to emulate that wherever we can. Call it plagiarizing or whatever. It's, that's what we try to do is make sure it works and, but to boil this down in my, in my head, this, again, this has been since 1983. A lot has changed. A lot of limits have changed and a lot of, and, and we haven't really kept up with, with everything. So this would bring us, it would just be, you know, we will comply with the BPBA, Virginia Public Procurement Act, but put place more restrictions than what the state has on it, and I'm restating some of this stuff. And that way, when there's a change to the, the VPBA at the state level, we're already in compliance, because we state that we're going to be in compliance, but our restrictions will remain the same. I think it'll help streamline procurement. Again, there's a, there's a currently necessary, but I think probably ultimately unnecessary log jam when we have these small purchases that all have to run through one, one spot. And the other thing I wanted to make sure is to reiterate, it's on the agenda, on the regular agenda. If you wanted to act, this is a, lots to take in. So there, there is no specific rush on this other than the fact that we, we would like to start getting some things in place for implementation of the Tyler system. Like Ashton said, we're filling out some worksheets that show the flow. And we'll, we'll need to be doing that sooner or later, but there's, there's none that says you have to act tonight.
But we would hope relatively soon, if you do not choose to act tonight, because some of these dollar limits and stuff, we, we actually program into Tyler itself, these dollar limits. So, for example, right now, we'd be programming in $2,501 as soon as someone tries to exceed, puts that amount or anything that, if, it stops and it starts, has to start running through the whole chain, this flow chart business as mentioning, whereas the, if there's a higher limit, there's less steps involved. There's still more steps. For example, as the finance director, I'm still being notified of everything. Because right now, I currently review every single invoice, and I'll continually be doing that, but the also makes it more equitable because you know, trying to make it more streamlined across county by, so that some of the constitutional officers are following the same procedures as the rest of the county. I think it would also be easier if we had a
if everything was the same, more flexible. Yep. So, so to Ashton's point, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying it doesn't have to be tonight, but soon. We would, we'd like, and if there, if, if it's the board's appetite not to change, that's fine too. We know what number to plug in.
Does anybody have any comments? Is there's more time? Would more time help this board make a decision? Or do we have everything? There's no other information coming out that's going to help us with this. We have everything we need to make a decision, right?
Everything has the policy. We, the, the, by authorizing the procurement agent to create the, the manual for the procedures and for the regulations, that of course would become later date, because it's included a lot of stuff going with them. But it's developing as we, as we adopt the new software and get trained on it. So that would be some, that would come sometime later. The board could make the decision, if you'd like that, that you would, that you would have to, it would have to have your approval. I think what Ashton was trying to indicate was if we could actually have the, the procurement agent could have flexibility to make changes at the policy manual level without having to get board approval and just keep the board aware of it, then that would, when we have to make small changes, then we wouldn't every time have to bring it back to the board. So that, that would be a, something that's a little bit different than now, except for frankly speaking, we just don't bring anything back to you, because it's, we have the policy and we just kind of do our business and haven't really, our existing policy is a little bit outdated and we just kind of follow the, what we consider the proper procedures. So we're trying to bring our policy in alignment with what we're currently doing anyway, and then give a little more flexibility to the, to the county administration to be able to make the changes on the day-to-day procedures of how it's done. While the board would then, of course, obviously adopt the policy that we're proposing for, could be done today if we're ready to.
And one quick point to note, he mentioned that Augusta County's was by ordinance. The code, code allows for this to be done by resolution, which is what's in front of you.
Yeah, there is, there is, my personal view is at some point, we'd like to, we are, one of our plans is to work on updating our current code. At some point, I would like to get this into the code, but we don't have to, I think, pass it by resolution. No need for public hearing, but later on down the road, it might come back again to, as, do as ordinance, but we have a lot of other things get done before that.
John?
Yes, sir.
Did you say that we would no longer receive paper bids?
We don't now. By law, we can't. Everything has to be done by electronic. Well, actually, am I saying that wrong?
Yes, we, we have to take electronic bids. So that's, that's the law. We made a decision that we didn't want to have a mixed bag of some being submitted electronically and some by paper. So we've gone all electronic.
Yeah, the law states that every bid has to go through either an, an electronic system we adopt or through Eva, and we've gone through Eva because it doesn't cost us anything.
And it's a very good system.
And it's a good system, yeah. Which means, yeah, so we can't, somebody can't bring us a paper bid in now. The, everything goes through the Eva system now.
These, and this is on the, I, I should mention, this is the formal, when we, on the formal bids, when we do these like, like these informal quotes. If we were like submitting
Well, speak into it so everybody can hear. Okay.
If we are doing the, like the, below these thresholds, when we're talking about informal quotes, yeah, those are, you know, we done by email and paper and stuff like that. It's only those formal over the, when we actually have a formal request for proposal or IFD that has to be done electronically. When we go out solicit quotes from different people, different, under the threshold, we, we do that paper.
And that changed, was that about a year ago, or is that about six months ago?
That was the beginning of this year.
Yeah, beginning of this year, yeah. So it's been a little while. Okay. And then that's changed by statute. We, we have to follow the statute on that.
And the Eva systems, it, it attracts it really well.
Oh, it does. And, and our, our, our RFPs now actually go out through Eva. So we send notification, but you know, everything's posted up on Eva. And, and most, most contractors, that's the system they've been using anyway. So it's, we haven't had too many difficulties with that. Probably easier for them in a lot of ways. Makes it easier for us too, because there's no question whether we open the bid beforehand, because you know, there's strict rules about when you can actually open a bid, when it comes in, you can't open it right away. Now Eva takes care of all that. We can't see any of those until the date when we're allowed to do it under law. So it removes any questions on those things.
It, it also, it reduced some confusion, in my opinion, because you got a one-stop shop, because anybody asks the question, where do I go to see the published request for proposals or whatever? It's always on Eva. And the, the contractors and, and consultants and other people, they're checking it all the time. So we'll, we'll get, we'll get interest from Tidewater on X project or something. So it gets, or, or from way away from here. So it, it increases the competition.
And also, and on the
Put that on our website. You know, we're looking for, have an IFD for a certain item and to visit Eva. That's how we put it.
Are we doing that? I think we are. Yeah.
Yeah, we have a good page.
Yeah, you, we got a bid postings are on the website.
Along with explanations, you have to use Eva, the link to get to Eva.
And, and on the purchasing side, not just on us as listing bids, but it's also very good when we are looking at buying different items. Department heads and stuff going to, looking at suppliers and stuff on Eva is also a good resource on the, that purchasing side. And Amy's very well-trained on that. She's helped train some other jurisdictions on wanting to know more about Eva. So it's, it's just really good system. Wanting to know more about Eva. So it's it's just really good system. But uh you know, one of the it it you know. Uh Spencer asked me to provide some examples, but you know, some examples we're talking about in a purchasing manual would be like a capital item. We define capital. We'd want to formally define that, but we've been operating with anything over five thousand dollars that has a life expectancy of at least five years. Uh see, that would be something that would we want in the manual because that requires a different step. Uh the department head uh as far as. It's not really approval, but so that 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 type of information is documented so that we can get it on our insurance schedule is the main purpose for that. And you know, those are those are type of little little things that I see as more. Really getting into the weeds and not having to. Bring up to the board every single time if we ever want to change that to say seventy-five hundred or whatever an auditor maybe recommend. Had to, you know. Have work sessions and bring all that stuff back just to say, hey. We're going to five thousand to seventy-five hundred dollars here's the whole. Process. Uh I don't know if the if people. At least my experience, boards typically don't want to get into the weeds and that type of stuff, but it's a prerogative, but. That would that but that would be something, for example, that would be in the manual. Has nothing to do with the limits and the controls that you're putting and making. These limits.
But wouldn't that be updated, like you said, annually per auditor's report?
The oh I uh I honestly, I I see us going through a couple iterations. Two or three iterations in the next couple of years or policy procedures manual. Just just because of Tyler and learning it and what's working and what's not working. And one of those, uh I think the finance team and the IT team, uh we've already prepared ourselves. Uh no and the schools, uh finance team, and there's gonna have to be some. Changes uh to our purchasing manuals. When we actually start getting into the training for the department heads. Uh the end users, we want to set those, be clear in those expectations that. Don't expect it to work perfectly, all these rules and procedures and these flow charts. We're gonna find out pretty quickly what's working, what's not working. And. Amend those uh procedures accordingly, uh for recommendation to the county administrator to adopt in writing. So that again, it's important that we do this and all these steps in writing. Because one of the most frustrating things on department heads of the. And again, I respect their frustration. They want to be able to reference something, you want to see something in writing, but haven't always called me or you know.
Will could, will there be a report basically attract changes? I mean, well, at the end of the year, there'll be. Like a report of what what was changed in this? I mean, is that?
Yeah, well, actually, what I would, I would foresee, once we get the first. If separate from this resolution, if if this resolution was adopted by the board. We would staff, we well, we're already been working on a policies and procedures manual. I would see running that by the finance committee just to get the second pair of eyes on things is. What I has envisioned, because it's. I think uh all the members have ever been since I've been here on the finance video really good at catching things.
That that's a wonderful idea, but then, as you said, there might be things that you realize, okay. These these couple of things change and you might run those back, finance committee as well. But at at the end of the year, certainly, uh we sometimes from the public, right, but they want, they want to see our process for changing things.
Sure.
And it's not such a bad idea to have an annual, you know, okay, these things were. Changed in the manual instead of just they just change.
Oh, yes, uh yes, ma'am. Uh the the uh it would be posted online. Yes, we would. This would not be, uh this would be a public document. This is even though it's.
I know the finished product is, but the the changes are not. They would, they people would need to actually compare one to the other. Is that what I'm hearing?
Oh, yeah, just yeah, we do it that way. Yes, that's how we do it. We would. Like, yeah, like, oh, right, you'd see like, uh it'd be uh like, like any kind of manual, you know, has chapter this. Section this, we made a check, uh for example, a a change to. Section ten bullet point three. Yeah, we attract those changes.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely. With little dates at the end.
Excellent, okay. Do we have any? Any other questions? I mean, we we still have twenty-five minutes, so if we have more work to do on this, we.
And we do, what once you're finished with this, if there's any question of the actually the policy itself or. Uh I would like to spend a few minutes to talk about the contracting authority and get them bring that up to whenever whenever you're ready to move on to that subject.
Shall we move on?
Just to give an idea why we consider this be an issue, um whenever anything comes across the. Anything that would require um the the signature or the the legal agreement of the county. Uh in theory should come to the board of supervisors for approval. But there's a lot of little things that cover that, frankly, and speaking of purchase order would cover that. But however, under when it comes to the, and this is not just on the purchasing side, we're bringing it up now because it does kind of tie into procurement, but um. Uh sometimes we'll get grant applications where you have to get the application in within a certain timeframe and that's prior to being able to bring it to the board of supervisors. And and so sometimes, you know, we we go and submit that. That's not necessarily, say, a legal binding contract, but it has to be signed and it really should be signed under the. In my legal opinion, should be signed after the approval of the board supervisors. Uh however, sometimes just have to get in or we we lose opportunity to do that. Sometimes there's a small agreements that can come up that are actually quite small, that may have no budget effect whatsoever. Don't have anything to do with uh our budget that um would in in theory to be able to sign any of those. You would have to bring every single one of them to the board supervisors to get approval and that's from a management point of view, that gets to be quite difficult to do. So a as the county attorney, what I would like to see to do this, to make it more formalized would be to some sort of policy in place where but. At something would trigger whereby the county administrator would have the authority to, you know, uh sign on behalf of the county for anything. Either below a certain dollar amount or for any contracts that um that don't affect the budget. We have an an example of a contract would be the one we we rent out our um what used to be the rental assistance office. We rent that to, you know, the. To the Commonwealth for them to to imagine that, you know, is that something that every time and maybe it should, but is that something that every time needs to come to the border? Uh board supervisors every time we renew that or not. Uh and there's there's dozens and dozens of examples like that. So the thought would be and would be if we could find some type and we're not. We don't actually have a recommendation at this stage, but we thought it'd be good to bring it to the board now. And to think of some sort of cutoff whereby we could grant uh the authority to the county administrator. Uh to uh to sign such documents or to and and also empower him that he can delegate that to. You know, a department head if there's a particular thing that comes up there. Uh and so so we just want to begin that conversation to see what the whether when we talk, if we're talking about financial numbers, which might be one cutoff. We had talked before about fifty thousand dollars below, but I don't think I did a very good job explaining that. So I think it's good to bring this out now. So everybody can kind of think about it and maybe get somewhere. And also for maybe something like the the leasing of the of the office upstairs. Is does every time we renew that lease, do we need to bring it to the board or not? And that's a question that you all need to consider. Um as as to what would be appropriate. And as I mentioned before, the, you know, the, it's not unusual for city administrators. And I'm not sure about other county administrators, but city administrators to have the authority granted by their charter for the. City administrator to be able to, you know, sign on behalf of the city for particular things. Net, we, I do know also that, you know, in certain counties, because we do have certain different forms of county government in Virginia. And some of those counties, the county administrator actually has a lot more authority and is able to sign by statutory rights. But um but in the in the general type of government that we have, it's everything rests with the board supervisors. And if we already in, there is an argument that you already have granted some of that authority when it comes to procurement, because when you pass the budget. You um there's within the budget line, you grant the department has the authority to uh ex to s- to spend the the money allocated to them. And sometime, part of the way of spending that is to sign agreements to do so. Um but uh but that I'm as an attorney, I'd rather see that more clearly allocated than 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 the way it is now. So I would think we'd just like to bring this before the board now, and we obviously will be bringing it before you all later and probably seeing if we get any input to. Give the resolution.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the last time that you brought it since you were not here.
Wasn't here, yeah.
And I I feel that the only holdup was the level, the the the.
Way, yeah, and that that time we just brought just for numbers, but you know, but as I looked at it, there's several contracts which don't have a monetary value. And so some of those would probably it. It would make sense. Uh you know, sometimes like, for example, we get a a contract with a software company who's part of federal. Where a government's paying the cost of it and it's just something small that you're doing. Would you? Um when it really has no effect on our budget, it really has no effect. In other words, do we want to bring everything, all those to the board? Um and so those are just ones to kind of keep in mind as we consider the right way to do it.
So when will you be bringing that? You said you were gonna bring it forward.
Oh, yeah, frankly, today was just, we thought we should bring it before you as as to 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 just to gauge the initial reaction. And if there's support that we bring something more formally, we'd we, yeah, we we definitely do. So it's not a, there's no. Unless Spencer has something, there's no, no big rush with it, but you know, the sooner we can get that clarified, the better.
I I feel like we already did this and I feel like we already said we, I mean, correct me, that we were ready for this. It was just the amount.
And and I think I think there's probably a, there probably could have been a better uh. I I did speak with several you prior to that time, but I don't think I did a very good job really explaining the whole situation. So I think this is actually one of those steps too, to make sure we get the explanation out more. So I better understand of why we are recommending this and then why a certain level could is is the level we think is most appropriate.
Spencer, can you speak? I mean, this is something you feel that does hamper your ability to get stuff done, right?
Well, it it does. I mean, I I think we as staff do a pretty good job of 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 feeling out and and knowing. Knowing when it's, there's something we need, we need to take the board. We we were pretty good about that. And then and then in trying to get the job done. Uh in other cases, when when we know what the board's will is. Um and I'll just, I'm just looking around. I said, okay, let's let's say the board budgeted fifty thousand dollars or thirty, forty, forty-seven thousand dollars to paint the interior of this building. Um and um we got, we went through the procurement process that our self self-appointed or um. Designated procurement process that hopefully we'll have here soon. And we got the bids and we got a bid for forty-two thousand dollars. Um the question is, do do I need to come to the board and say, okay, we've gone through a process, we're under budget? Do we just go ahead and do the work or do we come to you and say, okay, we've presented these three? We got these bids and we we did all this, we did everything right. Do we have permission to spend it? When in reality, you've already appropriated, you've already budgeted the money and appropriated it. Now, it's a different scenario. If you've got a mid-year appropriation for something, that that's got to come through. And you got to appropriate specific funds for a specific purpose. And we still have to then go through the whole process to to make that. It's just it 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 turn, it's it's kind of a a timing uh and keeping wheels turning type of thing.
So so I'm hearing you want to know how we feel about this and whether you should draw it up.
Right. And 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 a great example would probably be like the the courthouse would be a really good example. You know, the courthouse, we had an emergency contract, we went to the emergency procurement series, we went to do that. Because we were able to do that with a local contractor who's willing to work without a contract being signed. But in a lot other circumstances, that's not gonna always happen. And then there wouldn't be an opportunity to get to the board. Uh beforehand, as the county attorney, I'd much rather see that we have a policy in place that in those circumstances, you allow the county administrator to sign. And probably bring back for ratification or whatever it is, but they actually have a policy in place, so it's quite clear that what's being done is to be done legally. And so there there's, so things like that, there's beyond just procurement, there's um there's several examples. And so, yeah, so if if we're. If there's an interest on the board's part that we can bring something a little more formal to you and um which would be on just procurement, we need to find a way to. Other small ones that aren't default outside of procurement and see if you agree to that.
Do you have something of provision for sole sourcing?
Yes, there is. That's actually under the Virginia Public Procurement Act. We can only do sole sourcing in certain circumstances and we have to have certain documentation. For doing so. But I mean, i- i- it's not prohibited, it just has to go within. Obviously, they're trying to promote um avoid corruption and promote um competition, but it it can be done as long as it's the right way.
Necessarily. I mean, I'm fine with with what you're asking about, but I'm fine with it because. We have a seasoned staff. Been around block a couple times, knows how the county works, knows how this board works, knows the will of the board. I would have a different opinion if it was someone brand new sitting in that seat. So my question is, does it have to be by policy which would follow a change? Or is it, how does that work?
Well, actually, I think that's a real good illustration why, because currently things are being done, as Spencer said, where. The management understands the will of the board and has a good relationship. But if you're to get and so, but there is no formal policy written down as to have to do things. Which means that if we, someone comes in to take Spencer's place who doesn't function in the same way. You know, the board might be pretty upset to see certain things going on, but if we have a policy in place, it's quite clear what you can and can't do. Right now, without a policy in place, this is because Spencer keeps you informed, you have a good relationship, but it's done on that side. Which makes me as the county attorney uncomfortable. I'd much rather see it as a that that to me argues for having a formal policy because. We we don't know who's gonna take Ashton's place. We don't know who's gonna take Spencer's place at some point. And and we don't know when when different boards elected, what their views might be on it. And so it's uh so I I would think that that would um that would make me more comfortable if we could have something more in priding. Where under these circumstances, the the county minister specifically authorizes act. And then the other circumstances, that means they would need to come to the board for formal approval.
But could it not be subject to a change? Like, if there was a change at the county administrator level. That policy would need to come back to the board for update?
Uh we could write it that way. That'd be a little bit unusual to write it that way, because normally, because the, because you know, you could have a different board members at some point, but. Yeah, I mean, I don't see why there'd be a reason why we couldn't. I mean, we could.
I mean, to me, the communication level now, it's good. I mean, you know, we we know he keeps us informed of what's going on and what needs to be done, how it's going to get there.
Yeah.
Someone new may not communicate the same way. A- a- and it may cause concern for whether it's these board members or future board members or whatnot, so.
Yeah, that sounds that sounds good. Well, if if it's all right with the board, we can, uh working with Spencer, we can come up with some kind of language. And then circulate to the board probably before any meetings. And then if there's any comments or changes you'd like to make, including adding something like that. We can find a way to meet everybody's needs.
I just think if you're, if there is a change like that, which whoever is on the board at that particular time. Should understand the roles, responsibilities and and what powers that person has to act upon. So they need to be made aware of. If they want to make changes, that's fine. If they don't, that's fine too, but.
Uh that's fine. And I and I agree, I agree with you. And I think the, I think we're on the same page, because my whole thought is that we don't have anything in policy in place, don't have any writing, so there's no. It's um like if when a new board member comes in from natural birds at some point, unless you tell them how it goes. It's not even part of what we normally do in our orientation. Because it's uh because we we really should have a policy in place, from my view. We really should have a policy in place.
Even if it says he has no authority.
Well, right. Well, have have having no having no policy actually is basically saying that, but it'd be better to have it right written writing. Um so I so it it's we. And you know, our our the management's point of view is that we do need to have some level of authority to do it, because it's it's just too cumbersome to have to come to the board every time. And I think and I think I I'm I'm I would gather the board would probably agree too. It's just a matter of finding the right wording and where you feel comfortable. Including, you know, whatever limitations are are triggering things and change things are. We, yeah, I think we have, right now, this is just something of. Wide open, we can come up with whatever we think is most appropriate.
And the board can always change any policy.
Yeah, the board, yeah, the board.
If you change.
Just takes three.
Personality, you don't need it in a policy that you, you can, you can change any policy anytime you choose.
Yeah, and that's why having a written policy is pretty good, because then you can change the policy. If you don't have a written policy, there's really not much you can change.
It might be I for you to sign the contract and the painting, but you better check the customer hook up.
See, that, uh, supervisor day, that's where I know you all, and you'd know I would. Um, i- if it, if it would be helpful, um, we could, we could get a few examples of similar localities and just say, this is what they do. Um, uh, but I'm sure that you all don't wanna see, uh, a, a, a software, uh, contract upgrade for, that's, we pay every year for twenty eight hundred bucks. I mean, you know, that's gonna waste your time, and it's gonna slow down our processes, and, and we, we, we wanna be efficient. But we wanna make sure that you as board members are comfortable with what you're assigning, and so if I was you all, I would.
We're not seeing that, so you are doing that.
Yeah.
To, to his point.
So, um, uh, so, yeah, we just, I, my recommendation would be, would be to set your limits where you would be, you know, comfortable with that position, um, having the authority to do it. Um, whether it's me or somebody else. Um, because, you know, a, a board, when they, when, when my replacement is hired, you have the opportunity to, to hopefully pick the, the person that you all think's gonna do the best job, hopefully better than me, so.
They're working in the position you're in currently. All right. Any other questions on this? Any other comments? Now, we'll take a break.
Should we go ahead and leave the policy on the agenda for the regular meeting, or do you want?
I very much would like that. Any objections to that? We're gonna take a short break and come back at five thirty.
You know, I'm watching online, we'll be back in about, uh, eight minutes.
Welcome to the Monday, September, uh, uh, we gotta change that. Welcome to the Monday, October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five Board of Supervisors meeting, this meeting is now called to order. Ms. Wooden, will you please conduct roll?
Supervisor Lewis. Supervisor Day.
Here.
Supervisor McDaniel.
Here.
Supervisor Lyons.
Here.
Chair Ayers.
I'm here. We will now offer an invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Those attending are not required to participate, but if you'd like to join us, please stand.
Lord, as we gather here today, I think of how blessed we are to be born, to live in such a great nation. With our upcoming elections, I pray that your will will be done. Pray for those who have lost loved ones in recent days, and to give them peace and comfort during this time. Pray for those among us that are ill and ask for your healing, that comes only from you, Lord. And now, I ask, could you be with us as we make our decisions here this afternoon? Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever.
We will hold citizen comments near the beginning of the meeting, we will do our best to take citizen comment remotely. There are two options for citizens to offer comment, to join by telephone, you may dial into one of the numbers listed on the county website. Webinar ID and password are there for your convenience. Citizens wishing to simply view the meeting live or after the fact can do so on the Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors YouTube channel, also available on the county website. If you wish to make a citizen comment as a Zoom meeting participant, you will use the raise your hand feature. You can press raise hand button on the bottom of your Zoom window, or press star nine if you're calling in by telephone. Is there any changes to the agenda?
I have none.
We will now welcome citizen comments, when your name is called, please address the board at the podium stating your first and last name and magisterial district. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes, there is a timer on the table for your convenience. Is there anyone signed up to speak?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone online?
No, ma'am.
Anybody out there? Okay. We will move on then to the approval of September seventeenth, twenty twenty five Joint School Board Meeting Minutes and October fourteen, twenty twenty five minutes. Are there any, should we separate those? Any preference? If, uh, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes from the Joint School Board Meeting on September seventeen.
Next, Lyons, is there a second? Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel? Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, is there a motion to approve the board, uh, meeting minutes from October fourteen, twenty twenty five?
No move.
Your second? Is that you, Mr.?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Day? And I vote yes. School appropriation resolution, Mr. Harrison?
Uh, yes, um, the school is requesting, uh, uh, one million, thirty four thousand, two hundred and sixty nine dollars in new funds and carryover funds from FY twenty five. Uh, those funds include twelve thousand, five hundred, uh, for the recreation center study, a hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety six in Title II Part A grant, six hundred and ninety six thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars for a Title I grant, hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred in the SEGM grant, uh, five thousand, three hundred and twenty eight dollars for the Title III grant. Of FY twenty five carryovers include thirty five thousand, six hundred and two dollars for the IDEA six eleven grant, six hundred and thirty four dollars for the IDEA six nineteen grant, and twenty three dollars, uh, for the, uh, Title I grant.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Harrison? Is, if not, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
No move.
Second?
I'm second.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Day? Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
And I vote yes. County financial report and appropriation resolution, Mr. Harrison?
Uh, yes, before you, is a resolution requesting the, uh, payment of bills and additional appropriations. Total amount of bills this period is four hundred and thirty four thousand, three hundred and twenty five dollars and sixty six cents. And the, uh, fire and rescue, uh, ideally, this one we missed is fourteen thousand, four hundred and twenty. Uh, that's, uh, fire and rescue equipment, uh, that belongs in the new ambulance, uh. Ideally, uh, we should have carried that over back in August, uh, we, we missed that as staff, so, uh, we're just considering it a new appropriation. For that, and that's, uh, again, new, uh, new, uh, for the new ambulance equipment.
Okay. Gentlemen?
I, I should just mention, uh, uh, the audit, uh, kicks off, the official audit kicks off in two weeks, but we've been working on the pre-audit. In addition to all the Tyler training the last, uh, a couple weeks, and then so far, um, that's going well with, uh, Finance and Treasures Office.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second?
Second.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Day? Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
And I vote yes. Mr. Suter, update from the Rockbridge Area Community Services.
Yes, as noted in your package, uh, the Rockbridge Area Community Services Board was established in nineteen eighty two and serves, uh, the county, the two cities here in Bath County. Uh, its mission is to promote wellness, uh, and health through the provision of behavioral health substance, uh, use development, developmental and prevention services. And in recent years, uh, uh, Executive Director Kim Shaw was asked to provide a brief annual uh, update to the board, uh, in the month of October to include, uh, generally, numbers of clients served, services provided, goals for the upcoming years, that's, um, something like that. And so, uh, she's here tonight to present.
Good evening.
I've asked her to limit it to ninety minutes.
Thank you so much for letting us present to you. This is Breann Rogers, she is our communications coordinator, and we have been texting you these because Breann, like, gets very excited about sharing information, and I'm kind of boring, so we, we would like Breann to be able to share with us as well. You all have packets in front of you, included in those packets, um, are just some, it's a card where you, it has a QR code, so you can see all the services we provide. There's also a magnet with the same. There's a fun rain sticker in there, so Rain is our facility dog. Um, we are very excited about Rain, she makes a big difference for a lot of the individuals that we serve. Um, and she works throughout our agency in all of the disability areas, so, um, we also newly minted this year, we have a How to Start Services Open Access brochure. Um, we have a Consumer Experience Committee, uh, that worked really hard to put this together, so it basically, basically gives information about how people can come in and get into our services, uh, what they would need to bring all of, all of the information. There's also just a brochure and an annual report from last year. Um, and there's a purple sheet in there that has, uh, basically just, it's a resource list. So, um, that, we found that to be very helpful, we have this one for the Rockbridge County area, BB Lexington, and there's also one for Bath County, but, uh, that's different. Um, included within there are the total number of unique clients on these overview sheets for Rockbridge County, um, and then our total service area, so last year, And then our total service area. So last year, fiscal year '25, we served approximately 1,820 clients. 1,072 of those were Rockbridge specific. And also within there is a breakdown of like the disability areas. So you have the developmental, the substance use, and the mental health. 183 of those were emergency services that came in through our emergency service department. It is important to note that on these sheets, prevention numbers are not included. And prevention is a big area that we serve. So it's on the back.
It's on the back of the entire service area.
Okay, so, but I'm gonna let Breann share some of the.
Yeah, so I wanted to share that over the last fiscal year, we had the opportunity to apply for a new grant. It's a Virginia Foundation for Health and Youth Grant. We have received or been recipients of that grant for several years now in several cycles. But this time, we had the opportunity to include Rockbridge County schools in that because we changed curriculum. We were doing a Too Good for Drugs curriculum in the past, and we were getting requests frequently from the schools to have something specific to vaping. So we found a curriculum called Catch My Breath. It was a little bit less of an extent. It wasn't asking for 10 sessions for each grade. It was only asking for four. So we decided to expand that and offer it to Rockbridge County. Bless you.
Thank you.
To Rockbridge County schools as well. And we've already done one full year, and it's a three-year grant. So far, it's been received very well for the grades that have been receiving that curriculum. And also, we received a one-time funding for the dangers of fentanyl. While I know that's not necessarily the biggest concern in our area, it is definitely a concern amongst neighboring counties. So we wanted to make sure that we're staying ahead of the game on that, and it went to every single high school. So they, the prevention team did that presentation at each high school in our area.
Thank you. And just kind of building on that, it's important to note that we do have TDT therapeutic day treatment and school intervention services within each of the county schools except for Mountain View. We don't have the staff, so that's the only school that we don't have that service in at this juncture. We did start some new programs last year, so substance use IOP, which is a minimum of nine hours per week for services. And that is actually, we now have two groups that are going. And we average between 12 and 15 people. You know, they come and go, they graduate out. So we are the treatment part of Recovery Court. We currently have four participants that are participating in the SAIOP group as part of Recovery Court, which is actually pretty good for a new program that just started. The other thing that I did want to mention is that we do have a partnership with Rockbridge Regional Jail, where we have staff that are going in there and providing men's and women's groups on a weekly basis. So we have a lot of good things going on. I did just want to kind of give a shout out for the Veterans Parade that's coming up. On November 11th, we are actually excited to be part of that. We do have veteran services that we've been providing for the last couple of years. We have peers in that area. We've lost our peer, but we were just recently able to hire a new one. So we're excited about that to be able to continue those services.
I also wanted to add in, we love collaborating with community partners. And just want to remind you all, we are the fiscal agent for two community coalitions. We're the fiscal agent for the Rockbridge Area Prevention Coalition, which hosts the annual prevention forum. So if you all have heard of the prevention forum, where we bring community members together to talk about whatever the issues are that our youth are facing. We just had our eighth annual one, and we're averaging now anywhere between 80-plus people who are in attendance. And it covers a wide variety of topics. That is planned by our community coalition, and it is a big deal. So if you all hear about the next one, it's usually at the end of the summer timeframe. Love for you all to come out and just support them. They put a lot of time in that for that. The other one is our Live Healthy Rockbridge Kids Coalition. So the one focuses on mental health and substance use prevention. And then the other one focuses on physical activity and nutrition. That was called our Live Healthy Rockbridge Kids. So always busy, always doing something, up to some kind of project or initiative at any time.
Well, thank you all for your enthusiasm. Very clear.
Thank you. We're happy to answer any questions that you might have, or again, you have our information in there. If you find that you have questions later, please feel free to reach out. But again, thank you for letting us come and take up some of your time and for your support. We appreciate it.
Move on to the consideration of the FY 2027 budget and 27 to 31 CIP schedule. Mr. Harrison?
Yes, thank you. In closing with your board packet was the proposed FY 27 budget schedule and CIP schedule. There is a note that as in past years, the Board of Supervisors may amend the schedule as necessary to include additional meetings. Likely, again, that will happen. And Brandy does a great job when the board has additional meetings, getting that posted online, those changes when they are made, not if. And of note is, I believe it's a little bit earlier, the first proposed meeting with the school board is on the 17th. I'm sorry, Thursday, November 13th, at the Rockbridge Innovation Center. I think that's a little, just about a week or two earlier than, than typical. But the school board requested that because they'll be in training.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that because that's not the normal schedule, unfortunately.
Any questions? Is there a motion to adopt the schedule?
I move.
And a second. Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
And I vote yes.
And consideration of FY 2027 funding priorities?
The draft funding priorities for FY 27 budget is just that. It's a draft. It's a carbon copy of the funding priorities for FY 26 budget. No changes have been made by staff. So if you'd like to make some changes tonight, this is a time for that discussion among the board.
Questions or changes? Not? Is there a motion?
I move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Consideration of procurement policy, Dryden?
We covered much of this during the, during our work session, so we'll keep you a summary of what's going on. In, the county currently is operating under procurement policy, which was effective from January 1st, 1983. Our current procurement policy is outdated and needs to be updated. Also, counties are subject to the Virginia Public Procurement Act, unless we adopt a policy which enables us to not be subject to it. However, it is the recommendation of management that we, that we do remain subject to the Virginia Public Procurement Act. However, we adopt a small purchasing policy, which is with limits different than the ones which are in the Virginia Public Procurement Act. Those limits would be $100,000. Any purchases, $100,000, any purchase greater than $100,000 will be subject to the RFP process where we put out to bid for whatever that particular project might be. Anything below that, between $100,000 and $50,000, will be subject to the small purchasing policy where we get bids from three vendors at least, and, and choose the lowest price among those vendors or the vendor which we think meets the needs appropriately. Anything below $50,000 should be subject to our normal county management of those funds. And we'll be, department heads will have the authority to acquire goods through those, and it can blow that directly. For professional services, the numbers will be 80,000. Other than that, the 100,000, 50,000 numbers are applied to all procurement acquisitions in the county. We bring before the board today a resolution which would be adopting this. We've decided to go with the simplified resolution, and the resolution will state that we are subject to Virginia Public Procurement Act, which we are. We'll state our small purchasing policy, and we'll designate the county administrator as the purchasing agent, procurement agent, and we'll authorize a procurement agent to develop a manual for procurement, procurement procedures and regulations.
Great, thank you very much. Gentlemen? Is there a motion to adopt?
I move.
Second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
And I vote yes. Consideration to add Thirbaire Circle to VDOT State Secondary System. Mr. Suter?
Yes, this is typically, Mr. Sladen would be doing this, but I told him to go home. Periodically, we bring the board resolutions to allow, which allow for platted subdivision roads to be accepted into VDOT State Secondary System. Thirbaire Circle is located in Saddle Brook Ridge off Valley Pike in the Walker's Creek District. This road was recorded in a plat, on a plat way back in 2006, and it did have the required letter of credit, which was the surety to make sure it got built to VDOT standards with the, with the goal of eventual acceptance by VDOT. With construction of this road finally complete, VDOT has inspected and agreed to accept the road. The transaction includes minor administrative data correction in the VDOT road database and renumbering of a short section of what is currently off in lane to, to make the flow of that road more, I guess, reasonable. In addition to an explanatory sketch, copy of the recommended resolution and the required VDOT form are attached. Should the Board have approved the resolution, the county administrator, I would certify by, by signing the form and remitting all the documents to VDOT to consummate the transaction. This would also serve to release the remaining amounts on the letter of credit.
Thank you.
And Mr. Sladen is very happy to see this one done.
We want to please him, for sure. So any other questions for Mr. Suter? Not, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
We approve the resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
Mr. Day? Mr. McDaniel? Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
I love it.
Move on to any, are there any board comments or committee update?
I have one minor one. Well, I don't know if it's that minor. In regards to the New Horse Center, I'm sure many of you noticed the construction or excavation out front. That was a delightful addition of VDOT quality parking lot pavement and stormwater drainage for their front of Anderson Coliseum, which is also a long-awaited update to the Virginia Horse Center. So with some work from Delegate Austin and the Horse Center Board, there were funds found to complete that project. And I was there twice last week for different meetings, and the Appomattox Mezzanine, it sure is nice to have a nice defined parking space and a walkway.
And let it on your boot.
Oh, well, I don't want to, even though I'm used to that.
I've seen some terrible flooding before that, that came across that road. Was that the stormwater management that you, is that one of the?
I can speak to that.
Yeah.
That was part of the project was to, to improve the stormwater management. So an entire stormwater system was part of that project and some new sidewalks. And, and they also, if you've ever gone up the hill, up to Mead Hill, it gets bad from time to time, and they were able to find some millings and rework that road going up the hill. So, yeah, the stormwater should be fixed.
Much appreciated. Any other comments?
I have, well, one, just to remind our citizens, Halloween trick-or-treaters will be out on the road on Friday night. Please be careful when driving and be on lookout. And also, it, from the EDA, it may not be worthwhile discussing yet, but I'll just put it on your radar. There, there's requests coming that, from the EDA and from technically the Subcommittee on Housing that has been working to see what can be done in Rockbridge to help with housing. There was a meeting held in September with that committee, and we met with several contractors from the area and outside the area. And the biggest hurdle that they spoke of was density. And the fact that, you know, you have to have such a size of land to build on, and then the setbacks and everything else. And what they discussed was not changing density everywhere, but having small pockets that you can have higher density, townhomes, apartments, you know, duplexes, whatnot, that could lower the cost of building, which in turn would lower the price of the house. So I believe that committee and the EDA is going to be requesting that, that we take a look at that and designate possibly some areas that could have higher density with housing. I just want to put that on your radar, and that, you know, maybe we have our community development review and take a look and make recommendations, you know, if that's pleasing to the board. Or we could, you know, ask the EDA to, or to present, you know, something to, whichever you would prefer.
Over those? Good, good idea. I would love to hear more about that study, the housing, you know, the housing study. And yes, I'd like to hear from the EDA. How would you like to go about doing that, asking the EDA to present?
Don't we have a potential joint meeting at some point coming up?
We do.
We, we do, but it's not on that agenda. You mean on the 30th?
No, the, the joint meeting with the EDA.
Oh, right, right, right. Okay. We can do it then?
It's later November, early December, I think.
All right.
I just think, excuse me a second. I, I think the planning commission certainly needs to be involved in that.
That's part of it, too.
Compared to anything that would come to us, right? I mean, that was the way I read Brandy's request.
Well, we're not, we're just hearing information from the EDA. I don't think we're not.
Sharing that it was, it will be coming at some point as a request to look at. And like you said, the planning commission would probably be a good spot to start with.
And, and of course, the office of community development, I think it could represent a, as usual, a significant amount of work. So certainly, we'd love to hear their input, talk about it.
I did.
We're having conversations about.
I did check with Ms. Flint when I heard that and made sure that there was discussions were being had with the Office of Community Development, and they are.
I couldn't imagine there wasn't.
Right, right.
I'm just offering my thoughts on process there.
All right. If there are no other comments, um, is there a motion to adjourn?
I've got, I've got a couple, couple things. Of course, the reminder that we got a joint meeting with the Cities of Buna Vista and Lexington this Thursday, the 30th, at 7:00 PM at the Buna Vista Volunteer Fire Department. And I would also like to piggyback on what Kim said just a few minutes ago. Like to put a plug in for the Veterans Day Parade on November 11th. It's the, I pulled it up here. It's the 25th anniversary of the original memorial, memorial, Veterans Memorial dedication. And it is going to be a rededication of the new shifted memorial down there on that day. It's the 50th anniversary of the end of the Vietnam War. It's the 80th anniversary of the end, end of World War II. And it's the 100th, 100th anniversary of the receipt of the World War I cannon, which sits on the site adjacent to the memorial and is being moved over. So it's a very, very significant, and Bob Hopkins. very, very significant, and, uh, Bob Hopkins, uh, has really done a great job in pulling a lot of people together and just, uh, like to encourage the public to come and show their, uh, their support and, and, um, appreciation for all our veterans in the area.
Thank you for that. Anything else? Your motion to adjourn? And a second? Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Oh, yes.